Five oh seven and we have remote participants. Try and make sure I get everybody. Tim?
Yes.
Hannah?
Here.
Sarah Bass, I am here. William?
Here.
Oh, yeah, excellent. Jennifer?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Sarah? Oh, Sarah, I know Sarah's not coming. Irv? Irv? Nope. Bridget?
Here.
Great. All right, the regional school committee is in order.
And I will call the Amherst. Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
If you're calling to order, you stand at there, so can all, yeah, thank you.
I thought I could be loud. I call the Pelham School Committee to order at five oh eight PM. We also have at least one person remote. William?
Here.
Sarah Bass?
Present.
Jenny? Not sure if she's out there. Rachel? Okay, and Margaret, here.
Thank you.
And I'm calling the Amherst School Committee to order. And I think we're all of Amherst is remote, so Jennifer is here. Deb?
Here.
Bridget?
Here.
Sarah or Irv? Well, we are a quorum, so the Amherst School Committee is called to order. Thank you.
Lovely. Okay, are there any other boards or committees that need to call to order? I think Amherst Town Council? Lovely, thank you. Please use the public comment and then it will. That's fine.
Given that we have a quorum of the Amherst Town Council, I'm calling our meeting to order. As with all of you, I need to call on people individually, so let me try to make sure I get everybody. In the room at the high school are Ana Devlin-Gothier, can you hear us?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Ette?
Present.
Kathy Shane? And Lynn Griesmer is present. And then on Zoom, Counselor Randy Joe Haneky?
Present.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
Present.
Jennifer Taub?
Present.
Counselor Lord?
Present.
Just very quickly, I want to see if I missed anybody. That is it for now. And so we have a quorum of the council here. But in addition to that, we have a quorum of our finance committee here. Kathy Shane as chair. I've already called on the finance committee members, but she will check because we have one of our non-voting members. Kathy?
Thank you.
So we have one other member here, Tom Porter, who is a resident member of the finance committee. In addition to the council members that Len has already called.
So we have officially called the finance committee to order.
So I am calling the finance committee to order, and that's now an official statement.
Thank you. Are there any other boards, councils, committees that need to be called to order? From any town? Zoom? No? Okay. So I want to start by saying, thank you all for joining, whether you've called to order or not. You know, this has been a long time in the making, and I appreciate everybody taking the time out of their Thursday evening. And I would like to welcome the representatives from Mars who have worked to put this together for us. As we've said before, this is the information that we have asked them to pull. There has been some feedback and some questions. And if any of the clarifying questions that come up tonight require actually more research or more information, then the Mars representatives will just say that would require more information, right? So we don't, this is the information we have to work with today. Shannon, is there anything else before we get started?
No, I think that's it. I will hand it over to Steve.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Want me to begin?
Yes, please. We do have your presentation printed. Project, thank you, projected on the large screen in here, so we can.
Very good.
Megan will try to keep up.
Okay. I'm Steve Hammond. I'm with the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, our consulting group. And also with us is Julie Kelly, who is our researcher. Julie is the main research on these reports. We were asked to do four-town financial reports for Amherst, Pelham, Schuenebury, and Leverett, of which we've done and which we've delivered to you. As we go through it, I would point that we do do a, as a draft first, and then anything that we, needs to be taken care of. There might not be some accuracies, whatever, we take care of that and making sure we update, keep it updated. The purpose of this is to give the each, the school committee members in the town a report, the financial aspects of the town, each of the individual towns, where they are in the different aspects of school, of the town finances, and we have school data in there as well. So I'd like to begin, the first thing is that we're going to do is just quickly talk about some terms. And I think everybody's familiar with Prop two and a half, but this is an important part of school finance and town finance. And Prop two and a half, as you know, there's a levy limit and a levy ceiling. And the levy ceiling is the two and a half percent of the full value, cash value of taxable personal property in a community. The levy limit is what's being taxed at the time. And between the levy limit and levy ceiling, there is amount of money there that is not being taxed. And you, if you, the back, the problem that towns could have is the levy limit hits the levy ceiling, then you can't, any taxes could not increase. But most cases, there is not. The next thing is the excess, we talk excess capacity, and what happens at times, because you can add two and a half percent to your levy limit, sometimes communities do not tax up to the total amount that they can that year. Not only is the two and a half percent, but also adds to it is new growth in the community. And when a town is not taxing up to the maximum of the levy limit, is excess levy capacity that is created. So we just want to make sure we're discussing the same, but know that the meanings of what we're talking about. Override capacity is when you have your, you know, excess capacity that you're hitting, taxing right at the levy limit. And if you needed to go more, you have to do as you call it, is an override. And that is moving the levy limit up, which is below the levy ceiling, and you're okay to do that. And once a town hits the ceiling, they can no allow to raise taxes, I indicate, so that's override capacity. Free cash, free cash is when you have on your budget, when you get excess income or an excess, not spending all your budget, it goes into free cash. For towns in a region, it will go into E and D. So again, you get the certain bylaws that you have to follow that do that. State laws and bylaws are free cash and the use of that. Stabilization accounts, towns usually, even the region can establish a stabilization account. And that's for particular things that they want to fund for. Sometimes they'll put in stabilization road month, for roads. So when a large expenditure comes, they have the money. Also, bond, when you're going off for a loan or law, bond ratings, look to see what is your stabilization account that you can do. And you can create stabilization account for roads, you can for building maintenance or repairs, capital costs, anything that you want to credit for. When the money goes in, and then a town meeting, or the city council, in the case of Amherst, you have to be, it's a, it's a super majority in order to get the money out for other purposes, for the purposes for what you put in stabilization. Chapter seventy is the other important thing for school districts. And it's the way chapter seventy works, and it's a calculation, is what this, what this state does. They come up with what they call is a foundation budget, includes everything in the budget that the foundation, except it does not include transportation or debt. And so they come up with a foundation budget. Then they take a look at each community. What's the value of the property that you have in your community, and what's the income? And by the way, those calculations are probably a year or two years behind, because they get, wait till like, they get your income based on everybody filing this, your income tax. And you take a look at it, and on the, on a state level, chapter seventy, fifty-nine percent of the state foundation budget being funded by municipalities and forty-one percent by chapter seventy, by the Commonwealth. And it's also established target shares, which each municipality should be able to pay, and it's based on their, it's a wealth calculation. The other thing that's in there that this legislature has is hold harmless. That is, if you receive money, your chapter seventy came in, and for some reason, your enrollment dropped, your foundation budget dropped, and you're not getting it, it's dropped down, but your, same time, your amount, your minimum local contribution goes up, you could get less chapter seventy calculations. So what they, legislature does that if you, if that happens, they will not take away what you received, and usually you'll get a certain amount per student. And this year, FY twenty-six, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per student. So I think, wanted to make sure we have some idea of what we're talking about as we go through this, and Julie's going to explain to it. So Julie, go ahead up. We're going to talk about Schuenebury first.
So I hope that you have the actual reports in front of you, because all I did was pull the punch, you know, summary, to put into the PowerPoint. But I would like to go through the reports with you. It's easier if you flip it through the pages, so you can see the actual data. Why I chose data is because I'm a data person. And charts are great, but charts without data, you want to see the numbers, because percentages can, can be inflated, and when, and with the actual numbers, you have an idea of what's, what's happening, when it's happening, and how it's happening. I'm so, I'm thrilled that you have one of your towns in FINCOMs present, because one of the things that we, Steve and I have seen over the years, especially since the formula changed in FY oh seven, is that, you know, the towns against gowns became more pronounced, because they changed the formula where they decide, they've developed a formula where they determined some towns weren't paying enough towards education or towards the fifty-nine, forty-one percent, and other towns were paying too much towards it. And that process to get them to where their target is, was untenable for many towns, especially in central and western Mass. So we want.
Julie, you still there?
Hold on one second. We're having a bit of technical difficulty. Sorry, Julie. Can't pay. And what we need to do is develop a document of information.
Julie, can you hold on for a second?
Sure.
Thanks. So we're having some technical difficulties.
Did we lose some people?
She, she can continue.
Okay, so. So we wanted to give you some information. Okay, here's some information about your town. Thirty thousand, you know, foot view of it. Take that information, sit down with your FINCOM, sit down with your Board of Selectmen and Town Administrators, and ask, and have those conversations, so you're both on the same page. Hey, we as a district can't pay because of X, Y, Z. We recognize your challenges, too. Let's work together to advocate with our state legislators to try to get funding for our towns. We developed project two eleven, which were, I think many of you attended the presentation, and we're hopefully going to get some changes. But we're going to, I'm going to walk you through that, where your towns are. And hopefully, that'll give you some information, so you can advocate better with your state legislators, and also communicate better with your towns. I'm going to start with Schuenebury. It's a small town, as you know. I pull information from the Department of Public Health. The census report has information, but I went, when I went to look at it specifically for Amherst and Pelham, the information was not correct. And it wasn't correct for a lot of town, wasn't up to date. I find that Department of Public Health has the most up-to-date and accurate information about resident. Julie, you're cut out again. But Schuenebury have, you know, a low percentage of students that are zero to nineteen, which, as you see that, realize that with your student enrollment. And you also, but you also have a lower amount, for western Mass, that's pretty low, twenty-three percent of an aging community. In western Mass, it's anywhere from fifty to sixty percent. So that's a good thing. For your town, you have a lot of residents who are working and not on fixed income. Where does that come into play? Comes into play when you're looking, when you're determining if your residents can afford overrides. Ninety-three percent, talking of, speaking of overrides, ninety-three percent of the tax base in Schuenebury comes from residents. So you don't have a big commercial base there to even that out. So that's, you know, anytime you're talking about an override, that's why it's harder to get those passed, because it affects residents directly. On the excess levy capacity, there's many reasons why municipalities don't tax a full. They're allowed to tax, increase their levy, two and a half percent every year, without getting permission from the town residents. And a lot of towns don't do that, and they do that for a lot of reasons. Schuenebury, I'm going to guess, the reason why they did that is because for several years, they were operating close to their ceiling. So as Steve talked to you about proposition two and a half, there's a tax ceiling, that's two and a half percent of the total value of the town, that you can, your tax levy, you can increase that two and a half every single year, until you hit your ceiling. And once you hit your ceiling, you're not allowed to increase your taxes anymore. DOR gets involved. And for many years, when there was housing crash in two thousand and ten, and it took a long time for western Mass to recover, a lot, not all of western Mass, but parts of it. And some towns in western Mass still haven't recovered to their value of where they were before that crash of real estate. They, their tax ceiling dropped, because the value of the property dropped. And so they were, their tax levy and their tax ceiling were getting closer and closer, and Schuenebury got very close for several years. So you can see, and their excess levy capacity, they're not, they weren't allowed, or they were very cautious and conservative in increasing their taxes every year, because they were aware they were getting very close to their ceiling. So that's one of the towns. We saw this in many towns in western Mass. And DOR, Department of Local Services, actually were tracking it. And it got better and better, and a lot of the towns are out of it now, and they're doing really well, and Schuenebury is one of them. But I can see their concern and their need to be conservative, because they don't want to be in that position again. So that's most likely driving in two thousand and twenty-five, FY twenty-five, them having an excess levy capacity of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. That amount, they can tax and utilize and increase the levy without going to the residents, because it's excess. It's something they don't like to do, because that's increasing it more than two-point-five percent in that one year, and it, you know, that affects the taxpayer. But that's the amount they have in their excess capacity. And if you go over to the next page, to the override capacity, you can see where it went down to zero. And it's because they were getting closer and closer to their ceiling, because their ceiling was, their ceiling dropped. So it dropped in two thousand and nine, it didn't recover until two thousand and twenty-one. And their override capacity dropped in two thousand and ten and didn't recover until two thousand and twenty-four. So they're, they're going to be conservative, and that's a, that's a scary, that's a scary prospect. Because if you can't raise your taxes every year, you're looking at layoffs in the town, because you have contract increases, et cetera.
Ready for the next slide? Julie?
Or et cetera, that you have.
Julie, you're, you're kind of fading out.
Yeah, six, seven. Am I? I'm so sorry.
I think we're having connection issues.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Steve? Do you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry. So they have certain, five free cash of one point three oh six seven? Okay. For their bond rating, they'll see balances, and DOR likes to see them have, they recommend that they maintain balances of five percent for their free cash. And they do have, you know.
Looks like we may have lost Julie.
I think we may have lost Julie.
I, you know, that's really, I'm sorry that happened. I'm not sure, but who's end it's on? Our, her end or her end?
I mean, we can, we can still hear you.
I, we can, we can move on if you'd like.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're back.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can log in on my phone. Do you want me, do you want me to log in on my phone? I'm on my laptop.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, let me try that. Let me lock, get, leave out of here.
You want me to start doing some stuff, some presentation?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I think everybody can read what we've got up here, concerning the free cash was a million oh sixty-seven to ten. And also, we're talking about your stabilization that has it, and it does fluctuate. Again, you take a look at one of the things in two thousand and twenty-five, you had two hundred and sixteen vacant parcels in town signaling future development and education expenditures. You can read the percentage that they've been going up. Schuenebury has an overall point eight-one increase in total student enrollment since the two thousand and nineteen twenty year. And the population hasn't decreased, as you can take a look at more students choosing to homeschool.
Can you hear me?
Yep, okay, you're back, Julie?
I'm back, I'm back, I'm back.
I'm on the second slide, for Schuenebury.
Okay, I just wanted to go, I'll go back real quick to where I left off, the free cash. One point six seven, again, they're doing this again. I would imagine they're maintaining a real healthy balance because of them operating close to their ceiling, and they need to maintain a reserve that they can access quickly. They don't use, as you can see, the free cash use, they're pretty conservative with using it every year, which is good. When you use free cash, you put yourself in a, it's one-time funding, you put yourself in a structural deficit for the following year. You know that from E and D. So that's good. That's a healthy balance. Stabilization fund, that went down, you know, that's, we saw a steady decline in that, I'm not sure why. But they're about four, four percent, so that's pretty healthy, and it's better than a lot of other towns. Their parcel growth, a long time ago, I was asked to look at growth fact, you know, growth bylaws, and how it impacted the town's student count, tax ceiling, things along that nature. And, you know, years passed, and usually you see a pretty stark comparison when their growth bylaw gets implemented. Growth stops for single parcels, and then you see that public student, student count drop. And along with the, you know, you don't see that big growth in the tax ceiling anymore and override capacity. That's really not the case for any of the four towns. But I do offer it, so you can see it, single, it looks like something was, you know, the single-family parcels were reclassified, because they went drop from seven fifty to seven forty in two thousand and twenty-four, not a big deal. Student count, you know, roughly around the same. Anyone didn't really see any changes to the levy ceiling and override. There is two hundred and sixteen vacant parcels in town, and that could be a farm, one parcel could be a farm. That just signals potential growth if it's buildable. That information you can get directly from your assessor's office. It's just good to know, you know, what are the potential for growth, because you have low enrollments in your schools. And those are discussions that you have with the towns, with their town planners. The municipal budget is, it's a little bit tricky. Now, while education, the increase from two thousand and fifteen, has only been twelve percent with an overall expenditure increase of eighteen percent, their education as a percent of their total expenditures is in the sixties percent. And that is well above, you know, the average, and there's a reason for that, and we're going to get to that in the next page. I wanted to touch base, and this is going to apply to all four towns. If you attended the project two eleven presentation, we went over the model school budget and how the chapter seventy formula that is driven by student enrollment is affecting towns in hold harmless, districts in hold harmless, and regional districts. And not a good way. It's not, it's a failure. We have two hundred and eleven districts where this model budget is not, not working, then we have a failed chapter seventy funding problem. So we lobbied hard, and with the incredible work of Senator Comerford, Senator Lewis, representative Lee, Representative Ferguson, Senator Mark, we were finally able to get it passed in the budget, where they're going to have an outside consulting firm look at the chapter seventy formula for these specific issues. What the issue is, and it's important for the town's staff that are here to hear this, because I do think a lot of Amherst Pelham did attend the project two eleven, and we'll send that to you. It was a recording with the PowerPoint, so you have all the documents and information, and can watch it and share with your community. Is in, back in nineteen ninety-two, there was a model school budget developed by Edward Maskovich. And the Mass Business Alliance for Education, which is still around, commissioned him to do that, and he worked with superintendents from Schuenebury, PBD, Lincoln, and one regional act in Box Pro to pull data from them and to collaborate and determine what would be the model school budget. How many students do we need? How many students per class? You know, what are we going to do about special education? What you see in the chapter seventy funding, you know, foundation budget, that is what they determined. And it's still in two thousand and twenty-five, using the same model. The enrollment assumptions for a district to get enough funding to run a district. Would have an elementary school of three hundred to three hundred and fifty students per school with three elementary schools. Class sizes of twenty-two students in each class, a middle school of five hundred students per school. And a class size of twenty-five students per class and a high school of twelve hundred students per school and a class size of eighteen students per class. And with a total of about twenty-five hundred students together. Um, cause each student, there's eleven categories that each student gets funding for. And that includes administration, that's your central office staff, your principals, your um, nurses, your, all the mandated positions that you have to have. Each student is contributing money to that, so the model enrollment, the uh, enrollment assumptions, the model school budget. If you don't have this amount of students or these amount of students in each school. Then you're losing the economies of scale and you're not bringing in enough funding to um, to finance your school. And that is why in Schutzbury and actually in all of your towns, you're seeing. An elementary school with a foundation budget of a hundred and six students. That is no way sufficient to keep that school open and also contribute to central office staff, it's mandated. So that is why you're seeing the town of Schutzbury having to spend sixty percent of their total general budget expenditures. Toward ed- toward education, because they have to make up the difference. So this is not an Amherst Pelham problem, this is not the superintendent of Schutzbury's problem, um, elementary school problem, this is a. Uh, a very dire chapter seventy model enrollment, model school budget enrollment assumption problem. Um, which we brought to light, which we advocated hard for. Desi heard us, Senator Lewis heard us, Senate Chair of the Education Subcommittee in the State House. They understand it and they wanna fix it, so the next step is.
Julie, can I, I need to stop you, could we continue on please with the Schutzbury and the other towns, we got a timeframe here, so. Uh, I, 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 do you see the slide that's up now?
I don't, I don't, but, okay, so actual, so you have a hundred and six, what is foundation enrollment, includes resident, resident students. That the town district is financially responsible for, so it's the students. Attending school in district as well as charter school students going out and school choice students going out. Because the tuition for both are coming out of your chapter seventy-eight. Um, the enrollment for, as you can see, for Schutzbury uh, has been decreasing. It's ten point one seven since, since before uh, COVID, since FY nineteen. Your actual school enrollment is, you see a slight increase, because that, that includes students that are in the seats in your schools. And that would be your school choice in students and if you had allowed your staff to enroll the students in your schools. Um. The selected population, I like to add that just so you can see the um, the shifts. And it doesn't seem like much uh, when it's only one or two students, but it does, um, it is a problem, especially with um, students with disabilities. Because if you have one S L P that's traveling amongst the schools and then you add a couple of. You know, three or four students that need that services, you might have to add a point, another one, a point five, it makes a difference. So one or two students may not seem like much, but it actually is a lot when you're trying to determine how you're gonna um, provide those services. Um, your school attending children report is very good to look at. Um, every once in a while, it's information pulled from Sims that your district has reported. Just to look at where, where are the students going in um, our town? Uh, are they, why aren't they not choosing academic, where they go on the homeschool, private, you know, parochial schools? You know, that's gonna happen, um, but you wanna keep your eye on that to see how many are, are leaving and and if there's a reason why you might wanna send out. A survey, find out why they're not attending your school. School choice.
Julie, is there anything else on the set, we're on the uh, second slide for uh, Schutzbury, anything else you wanna emphasize there on that slide?
Yep. Yeah, school choice, um, you're doing good, you always wanna be net positive and you're net positive, you're pulling in more students than uh, that are leaving. Um. When you're looking at. Um, your equalized value for the town on page eighteen. So we'll, so with minimal local contribution, required contribution, they're looking at the equalized value of the town, which is a taxable property. Um, runs two years behind aggregate income of the residents. And they determine a capacity to pay and it's not a capacity to pay towards your foundation budget for Schutzbury, it's or for Amherst or Amherst Pelham. It's a capacity to pay towards the fifty-nine percent of all foundation budgets. Because that's, they, they add up all the foundation budgets in the state and they apply five fifty-nine percent is gonna come from the local. Um, municipalities and forty-one percent is gonna come from, ends by state aid. So once they determine what your capacity to pay is towards the fifty-nine percent, then they look at your town, your town foundation budget. That is why they add, added a cap of eighty-two point five, so you're not paying more than that and you're getting some relief. Um, towards your own foundation budget and you can see. The housing crash, you can see it realized and equalized value, it crashed in two thousand and twelve, it came back in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and you ended up increasing ninety-seven percent in value from when the formula changed in two thousand and seven. But your total enrollment for the town decreased thirty-eight percent. And your required contribution, um, it was only seventeen point nine percent increase, but it fluctuated. Because for several years when the formula changed, they thought Schutzbury was paying too much. So every year they calculated what your foundation, what your required contribution is gonna be, but then they added a little bit more, they gave you a little bit more relief. And aid because they thought you were paying too much. Unfortunately, in two thousand twenty-four, when the Student Opportunity Act was implemented and um, we saw the big increases to the fifty-nine percent. Um, they found that Schutzbury was not paying enough. So, you know, you had that ouch of them adding more, so they calculated your foundation budget and then they added more that they wanted you to pay. Um, I, I gave you the screenshots, I added a couple of rows for, from the key factors, Desi has this fantastic. Key factors document, Excel spreadsheet that um, Robin Melissa King had put together. And it really gives you some great information that you can see from when the formula changed, how it affected your district. You know, how you, your hold harmless status, you know, your, your um, target share, which is the target, uh, what percentage, your required contribution. What percentage of the foundation budget they wanted you to, to pay and FY oh seven, Schutzbury was sixty-four percent and then they fluctuated throughout the years. And they ended up in FY twenty-six being sixty-three percent. So while they gave you a lot of effort reduction and got you down in the fifties, they immediately jacked that back up. So that you remain uh, and hold harmless status of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. You're not, that's not gonna change unless you add students or the inflation factor increases.
Julie, are we ready to go to Leverett, please?
We are ready to go to Leverett, yep.
Okay, that's up on, that's up on the screen now.
That was uh, lengthy because it was the first one, but Leverett will just quickly go through as we will the other towns. Um. Leverett's a little different, their population is seventeen percent under nineteen, but they do have a higher aging population of thirty-one percent that they need to keep an eye on. Um, so that's fixed income in individuals and usually when you have. Uh, an aging population that's growing, the town needs to spend more money on different things like first responders, council on aging, things along that nature. Residential property represents eighty-eight percent of their tax levy, so it's not as high as Schutzbury, but um, it's. Already of the, the tax. So override, you know, are harder to pass in that word. Um, X capacity two, taxing the. Yeah, percent every, um, they have a healthy excess capacity in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. And I recommend that you have the conversation, like I'm looking at, as I said, from thirty thousand feet, have the conversation with FinCom and Leverett. Okay, why aren't we taxing the full amount, so they can give you some feedbacks? Your FinCom will probably be able to explain that in greater detail, so you have a better understanding of, of why they're making the decisions they're making. Um, override, the levy ceiling dropped in two thousand and eleven, it recovered in um, two thousand and twenty. And the override capacity dropped in two thousand and ten, that did not recover until two thousand and twenty-three. Those are things that they look at closely, um, you know, you can't consider overrides when you have those fluctuations or you have to be very cautious doing that. Um, their free cash, one point one million, that's great, um, they very conservative use of it. Stabilization account really nicely, uh, uh, increasing few fluctuations, this is, you know, they're in healthy, they're in good shape. Um, single parcels, not much growth, you have two hundred and five vacant parcels that can be developed, that might be able to be developed, your assessor can answer.
Julie, I moved, I moved the slide to the second, second one on, which starts as uh, as of two twenty-five, the town has two hundred and five vacant parcels. So that's what they're seeing now on the screen.
Okay, and then the municipal budget is the same thing. Um, education increased eighteen percent, total expenditures twenty-two percent, but their education as a percentage of total is in the sixties. And that's high and the reason why is because foundation enrollment. Which we're getting into the school piece is, is, is low and it's declining and it has been. Um, since before COVID and you're at ninety-six now, which is not sufficient to um, to pull in enough money, so the town has to make up. The difference, again, not the superintendent's fault, not the school committee's fault, this is a funding formula problem that we're all working together to fix. Um, actual student enrollment, I just give you that so you know, uh, it's just good to see. You know, foundation budget is really what you should be looking for, because you're only getting five thousand or so for those school choice kids that you've taken in. Um, but you have low uh, enrollment in your schools. Uh, again, I give you specialized populations, so you can just see the fluctuations, so you know the challenges that central office has with staffing. Your school attending report, you saw a big increase from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand twenty-five. Uh, I mean, it's only fifteen, you know, you're only twelve more students being homeschooled, might wanna look into that. Um, doesn't seem like a lot, but it is when you're looking at your total enrollment. School choice, looking good, unit income is more than, um, you're taking a lot more students than you're sending out, so that's, that looks great. That's solid. Um, equalized, sorry, I'm flipping through the reports. Um. Equalized value, everybody had the same problem except for, uh, Cambridge didn't have the problem and all, and some other places in Eastern Mass. But housing market crashed in two thousand and ten, it was realized in two thousand and twelve and equalized value. It recovered um, around two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. You had an increase of a hundred and thirty percent in uh, equalized value from the formula change. Income ninety-two percent, capacity to pay towards that fifty-nine percent is high. Your town, your town foundation budget, and again, this equalized value page is your town foundation budget. So it's all of the students in the town that's going to the municipal, elementary, the regional. And if you have any vocational students, so it's all the students that um, the town's responsible for. Um, the total town foundation budget increased thirty-three percent. You got some effort reduction because they thought you were paying too much and that flipped um, to a shortfall. Um, and when, you know, Student Opportunity Act came in and the fifty-nine percent increased, again. Really nice information from um. From Desi on their key finders, you started out at ninety, when the formula changed, you were at ninety-seven percent. You were paying towards your foundation budget and required contribution and that dropped to eighty-two point five. So the, the um, cap is important for towns like this. People think that eighty-two point five percent towns are rich towns and they're not, uh, not, not always, I mean, there are towns, of course, that are very wealthy. But I find that eighty-two point five percent towns, most of the time are towns with very low enrollment. So, you know, you're in whole harmless, it's gonna stay that way since the formula changed unless something changes at the state level. Pelham.
Are we ready to move to Pelham?
We are.
Okay, the first slide on Pelham is up.
Pelham, so I can't give you a resident breakdown because they included you in. Amherst for some reason, and I don't know why, um, your residential property, high ninety-two percent, hard to pass overrides with that. Access levy capacity is, um. You know, they're not, they're not raising it two and a half percent every year. They left, we like to call it, leaving it on the table, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Have a conversation with Pelham, why are we not doing the full amount they have, they might have a very good reason for it. Um, but those are conversations that you have with FinCom and the town administrator, um, and your board of selectmen. Um, your levy ceiling in Pelham dropped in two thousand and eleven and recovered in two thousand and eighteen. Override capacity dropped in two thousand and ten and did not recover until two thousand twenty-four. Um, so they're gonna be cautious with overrides as they should be. Free cash. Eighty-nine, a hundred and ninety-one thousand, that's really good, twelve point nine four percent. Um, and they're used to use a lot of it and they've been pretty conservative lately using it, which, you know, you, you, you want to see. Um, as a town, if you're a town, um, because you wanna maintain those healthy balances, stabilization accounts. Um, nice increase, they're dedicating money every year towards it, you can see that. Um. One of the questions that we got, and I was able to, I only saw, able to see a few of them, was why not include the other stabilization accounts or um. You know, enterprise accounts, things like that. I, we only included um, funding that the district would have access to in a sense. That's um, available cash to be applied to an education budget. Enterprise accounts are not, um, employees of an enterprise account work for the enterprise. Um, even, or partially work for the enterprise, you, you have no access to those funds. And other stabilization accounts, each town has something different and we wanted to keep it pretty consistent. Um, single family parcel growth, sim, you know, pretty nice increase. Um. Seventy-nine vacant parcels for possible development.
Julie, I'm on that second page.
Municipal budget. Education increased nineteen point five nine percent, total expenditures twenty-two, again, sixty percent, same reason. For um, that, you look at your foundation enrollment in FY twenty-six, sixty-five students for the elementary school. Which is a decrease of twenty-one percent. The towns have to make up the rest of that, you're not pulling in enough money to um, run a school or, or pay for central office. So the towns have to make that up, it's a funding problem, it's not a town problem, I mean, it's, it's your problem. It's not, it's not the fault of the town, it's not the fault of the superintendent, it is a funding problem. Um, your, there's your actual student enrollment, a nice increase of two point four oh, students taking in. Um, a good amount of s- um, school choice students, I get, which you are, um, you have a night net income. You don't want, never wanna be underwater for school choice and none of your towns really are, do a nice job with getting school choice students in. Um. Again, I gave you information about, so you can just look at your high need students, like what's fluctuation? A few students may not seem like much, but they are to central office because they have to dedicate um, supports for those students. So that can come, sometimes be a nightmare, especially when you don't have the funding to add staffs. Um. When you look at the equalized value for the entire town, for the students they're responsible for, you know, they saw their housing crash. Realized in two thousand and fourteen, it, it recovered in two thousand twenty-four. You know, you saw a hundred and nineteen, nice increase in value, you know, steady, okay, income eighty percent. And your capacity to pay ninety percent towards that fifty-nine percent. Your foundation budget increased, minimal increase because you have low student enrollment. Um, and required contribution was a small increase because I think you guys are eighty, you're at eighty-two percent, you were maxed out, so. You're not gonna see those big fluctuations and increases, but in the last couple of years, those were big, five, four, five, those are hard for the towns to absorb. Um. Then, one thing about nice about Pelham is they came out of whole harmless, so that's good and hopefully that, that remains the case. And now for Amherst. And Amherst, of course, has more students, so there's more schools. Um. Again, I'm not gonna go over their population. Um, again, I'm not gonna go over their population because they combined Pelham with you. Eighty-eight percent of the tax levy is residential. Um, excess capacity, they, I mean, they're, they're taxing, uh, they're, they're going up to two and a half percent. They're, they're not, they're not leaving a lot for a budget the size, their size. I wouldn't even think this is intentional. It may not even be an intentional, um, excess capacity. It could be just unrealized, unknown, new growth, um, that they weren't aware of. It could be intentional in two thousand and twenty-five, but usually when you compare it to the size of the budget, these aren't really big, um, uh, things that, excess. So, um, I would have a conversation with the assessor's office on, on that. Override capacity, they have healthy override capacity in Amherst, as would be expected. Um, free cash, you know, they have to tap into their free cash. Um, they do have a healthy amount, and that's good. Um, but they had, have had to use it, um, which, you know, that happens, and it just puts them in a structural deficit for the following year, so that's a tough thing to get out of. Stabilization account, you know, it, it fluctuates, but they're over the four, five percent, so they're healthy and they're good. Um, single parcel family growth was, you know, you saw a nice increase, um, in growth. They're growing, it's not, big growth, but they're growing, and they have four hundred and sixteen vacant parcels. Again, I don't know what that means. A part of, vacant parcel could be a huge farm, it could be, uh, one parcel of land. It's something that your assessor could tell you what it is exactly, and if it's buildable at all. Um, municipal budgets, twenty-one percent for education increase, and total expenditures was a lot less than that. Um, did, really didn't move much from, from FY fifteen. It went from eighty-three million to eighty-four million. Education as a percentage of total is around the average of fifty-two percent, that's what you wanted to see. I think this, the last two years, it's been around eighty, forty-eight percent, forty-nine percent, uh, is the state average. So they're spending at state average. Their foundation enrollment, while it's higher than the other towns, is still, um, below the amount that is needed to pull in enough money to run those elementary schools that they have. Um, and then I gave you the enrollment on each of your schools. So your foundation enrollment, remember, is the ones that you're getting, that's what you're getting money for, from the state. The actual student enrollment would include school choice and students, and you only get five thousand a student for those, so I just give it to you so you can see it. And then it, and by each town, I mean, by each, you have three elementary schools, and I just gave you the enrollment for each, because it's nice to see and look at. You look for bubble grades, things along that nature as a school committee, so you understand where you need to dedicate funds and, um, maybe need new staff or decrease, decreased staff, new staff. These are the things that your superintendent has to decide, make recommend, recommendations to you. It's just nice to see it. Um, enrollment by selected population, see some growth here. Um, student with disabilities, we saw a decrease, but, um, actually, we don't see some growth. It's flipped, I apologize, I'm looking at it the wrong way. Um, so, I mean, your enrollment, that's good, that means you can dedicate resources to other, and, and one, in summary, your schools, but that's what you're looking at. Where can we move resources? Where do we need more resources? One or two students could mean you need to hire more people, so, um, it's not something, it's something the superintendent may be concerned about. Your school attending children report, someone pointed out the three twenty-nine, that's what DESI is reporting. It could be a mistake that year in reporting for charter school out, and it probably was. A simple, just a mistake on their end. Your, um, your total student population in the town decreased from, uh, two thousand and nineteen before COVID. School choice, looking good. You're taking in more students than you're sending out, and that's what you want to see. Um, when you move to the equalized value, um, they had a short crash, they recovered quickly, um, and they saw a hundred and twenty-four percent increase in value from the formula change in two thousand and seven. Income's okay, eighty-one percent, capacity to pay towards that fifty-nine percent, increased ninety-one percent. Town enrollment, total town enrollment decreased thirty-one percent. Foundation budget, twenty-five percent increase, and you're gonna see that with declining enrollment towns. But look at that required local contribution increase, that's staggering, a hundred and eleven percent. That, that's staggering, towns cannot absorb that easily. Um, and you can see required contribution increases in the beginning were staggering, and they're kicking back up again. That was a har, that's really hard for towns to absorb that easily. So, school committees, you know, everybody has to be cognizant of that, and, you know, all work together, um, lobbying with your state representative. Um, Amherst Elementary Schools, three point four million in whole harmless status, that's tough. It's real tough to get out of that without the formula changing, and it's been the case since two thousand and nine. So then we're gonna jump into Amherst, Pelham, which I didn't do in any of the other reports. Decrease, I did not break it down by town for foundation enrollment, because it's, it doesn't break it down from middle school to high school. So your foundation enrollment as a whole decreased ten percent. Um, actual enrollment decreased six percent. Um, and the middle school, fourteen percent. What's nice about your ma, middle school to high school, in every district in the, pretty much, I almost, one dialogue at, in the Commonwealth, you see, uh, the transition from eighth to ninth grade, um, you lose students because they go to private school or vocational schools, and that's not, hasn't, wasn't the case in Amherst. That's great, that, that's rare, and that's great, good for, it must be a great high school, that's great, that people want to go there. Um, selected population for each, and your student, and your, um, school choice, you got a net positive, so you take it in more than you send it out, and that's what you want to see. Your whole harmless for Amherst, Pelham is five point nine million, that's tough, that's really tough. Um, and that's not gonna change until the foundation formula changes, and that's what we're in the process of doing. We have, um, it, it, they're going, they have a consulting firm that's going to do it, they're gonna have four public hearings, you're gonna hear from us about advocating and bringing this, this, this data to them and saying, you know, that we're in a situation where our towns are struggling, we're struggling, we're, we don't have the basics because we're not bringing enough money for our student enrollment for the basics. Um, so we need help, and this needs to change. Um, and we'll give you those information as those things get scheduled, we plan on having another meeting, um, in the near future to plan next steps.
Julie, is that, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing, and, uh, we have some time for some questions. We'd be glad to see you a, answering any particular questions that people might have.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, so, it is a little tricky going between the, if there, if you have a question online and your board or committee has been called to order, please raise your hand. Um, Megan will help me manage calling on people. Um, I will start if there are, town councilor, Kathy, come on up.
Hi, I'm Kathy Shane, and I'm from Amherst and chair of the Amherst Finance Committee. So I'm just going to list off some general comments we had, and this mainly focused on the Amherst report, but it also applies to some of the other towns. And Sarah Best, I don't know whether you shared them in advance with, uh, the authors of the Mars report or not?
Um, not the ones that I have received today, like, in the last week. So, the ones that came through originally from committee members, I have shared.
Okay.
My intention was to collect them after the meeting today, if there are any from any other towns and committees, and then forward them on to Mars.
Okay, so, so I'll try to be fairly brief. I have, uh, eight observations, so I'll, I'll try to be really quick for them. One, when you're looking at across different towns, so in this case, we have four, um, at general government, do you ever look at the part of general government that's for education? So for example, in the town of Amherst, we're paying the pensions of our elementary school non-teaching staff, and it's two and a half million dollars. So in that general fund is our educational monies, and different towns do it differently. Some put their health insurance there, or the OPEB place, some don't. Um, so that was a question, and I think it'll vary across the state, so I realize I'm not sending you off on a major research project, but just saying that that can account for some different.
No, it's, it's an excellent question, and it's the reason why you see some towns, um, only, it's showing that they're only paying like thirty percent towards education. It's beca, municipal towns, it's beca, districts, because their towns are absorbing the health insurance, and, and, and as you said, the retiree, uh, costs in their general bu, in their general government. It's an excellent question, it is not broken down. And, and the, my purpose, and please don't get us wrong, is, is not to be adversarial in it and give our districts, you know, information, hey, why aren't you doing this, and why aren't you doing? It's, so they have data so you can have a conversation with, with FinCom and say, okay, can we go through this? And so we're all on the same page and working together. We just wanted to get rid of that towns versus gowns thing. And, 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 yeah, that's a great question. So let's go through your municipal budget and what you reported to, um, DOR for expenditures, and can you explain to me, you know, how you categorize things? And, okay, that makes sense, now we, you know, so they understand. Absolutely, we just give this information to our school committee members, so, and, and superintendents, so they can, they can just be informed and have information to, to come to you with. But that's a very good question, and it's not broken down.
Thank you. Um, and what I'm saying is that it makes the comparisons difficult, and so it may hide some of the spending on education. I mean, the other place all of our towns are spending on education is the net cost of charter schools, and different of us carry that in different budgets, but it's a real cost against our tax base. Um, excess, uh, levy capacity, um, you put an Amherst number up there. The other way of characterizing Amherst would be is we have no excess levy capacity. When you're get, at the point oh oh one or point oh oh two, there just, there just isn't any, so I would just change the characterization, I mean, it, we're not gonna hit.
And I think I said, I said that for, for Amherst, when your budget is that size, this is, we're probably not intentional. It's, it's probably just, you know, uh, new growth that wasn't realized when the assessors gave you numbers. So, I, I would add, like, I talked to the assessors, because this probably wasn't intentional, it's not really access.
On some level, it can be rounding error also.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Um, free cash, I think you did on the slides today show that the free cash is being spent and reallocated, so, so showing the total amounts, um, and there's been a change in Amherst over time. It's interesting the way you sho, showed the different towns, so I just think, noting that the free cash is being spent, and in many indications, we spent, for example, on schools out of that free cash for the track and field a few years ago, a million dollars of it. So just being, you know, it's not necessary that it's not being spent on schools, some years it is. Uh, counts of charter and private school, I think you're getting this from the, where students go, from the state reports, but there's just something wrong with the numbers. When you count the actual charter numbers from our charter assessment each year, you get different numbers than you're getting, so you might just want to count them, you know, cross, because that's the.
Well, I mean, this, this is, this is a student, it, it's called stu, school attending children report, it's generated from the SIMS reports that I pull from DESI, and DESI gets that information directly from the district. Now, there could be errors that were reported, or DESI, when they generated the reports from SIMS, they were in error, and that's why I always, we always tell our superintendents and business managers to check the SIMS reports once they're certified, to make sure they're accurate, because that year, clearly, that wasn't accurate, so.
No, I realize, you're pulling a report, I'm just saying, I think there's something wrong with the report, and I don't know what the source of it is. Because the other source of charter is the assessment we get each year, and we have an exact, act, actual count of kids each year, and the private numbers looked odd. There's no way they go from large numbers to four the next number, so there's just something odd about the report, so I don't know what the problem with it is, but we noticed that. Um, school distribution, I don't know whether, um, and I, I know, actually, the gentleman in front of me did this also in his count, I think it's more useful to ca, do the counts of students when you're doing special needs rather than the percent, because one of the things you see is the counts have not changed that much over time, but the percent has gone up a lot. So my question is, is that happening in lots of districts? Is there something going on that, are we identifying more kids as special need? Are we losing the non-special need? You know, what is happening to that distribution? Because you can really see it when you plot it. Um, and I don't expect you to answer that, but it's more, uh, do you see this across the state? Do you see it, is it just our region? You know, what is going on?
I, I actually, I actually see in, in, across the state, a higher increase in ELL, um, low income in students with disabilities. But I, I pointed, I, I included, it was for other districts, it, it was important for them to see because of the increase, stark increases. But I included it because it, even though it's a few students, um, it, it, it means something to the superintendent who has to pro, provide support, especially in Western Mass, where it's difficult to find special education, um, related service providers. So if you are, like, even two or three more students, and you got one SLP traveling through schools, that's, that could tip the scales to needing more staff, and it just makes it extremely difficult for them. So, while you might not be aware of it, at the FinCom level, school committee is having those discussions with superintendent on, okay, we need to hire more mandated positions that, you know, are, are hard to come by in Western Mass. So that's why, I, I understand that, I, I totally get the percentage increase, it makes it look like it's bigger, but it, you know, a couple of students, it means something to the superintendent, it actually does. It's a, it's a conversation, so.
And do you have data on circuit breaker, so you could look circuit breaker trends over time? You know, are those also, those are the, the highest, most highest cost? Do we, do you have that? Is that easy to, is something just that would be useful to know? Has that been going up over time while enrollment has been going down? You know, so I'm looking at our high-cost kids.
I haven't looked at your circuit breaker numbers, it, it's an interesting piece to add to a report. Um, it actually is very interesting in your Medicaid, too. Um, so you can see what, what you're actually pulling in for revenue for, for, um, for special education. It's a good question, um, and it's a good, it's, it, I, I think it adds value to the report, now that's something we can consider doing.
Okay, and then the other, DESI has another, and I'm just focusing on special needs right now, and I haven't done this analysis, but they have a category of, of your special needs kids, how many are in the regular classroom? Eighty percent of the time are not, forty to seventy-nine percent are mainly out. You can divide your kids up, and I've done this in a comparison with our charter schools, where we are very different from the charter schools, so just, again, trends on that over time might be useful, so are we getting the more severe end of special needs or not? And it's a comment rather than, because it's, it's DESI data, so it is available.
It is DESI data, it's just difficult to, you have to capture it every year, I'd have to download it every year to be able to, because I think it only, only, it's through DART or radar, and they only provide it per year, and then they don't give you the previous years. So it's, um, and it, and it's outdated, it's, I think the one on radar now is, oh, and maybe the SPED isn't, actually, it's from March, I think, or July. It's, it's, I could give you current year information, um, but it's something, I, I already actually radar, I don't even think you can download it. It, it, it's, it's data I have to pull manually. Um, it's a weird system that they use, I can contact DESI to see if I can access it. But, it, yeah, that's interesting, it's an interesting, um, thing to, to analyze. Certainly, charter schools are not servicing the, the level of needs that public schools are at all, neither are vocational technical schools.
So the last two are more comments, because I do know what you were looking for, you were looking for potential sources of funding support. So Amherst has a very high tax rate, um, per thousand, and part of that is our limited base, which you already pointed out, we don't have commercial, but it's also, we have a lot of land that's tax exempt. Um, we can't tax the universities, the colleges, state land, um, and conservation land, so that the, while there might be an override capacity, we're at a very high tax rate already in the citizens, so it's a comment on that. Then the next, and, and with that, it's, we're also already paying for an elementary school out of an additional amount that people are gonna be seeing in their tax bill, so just capturing some of the unusual, we voted a tax exclusion, a debt exclusion, and it's a, a pretty expensive school. and it's a pretty expensive school we're building. And the final comment is, and I understand the purpose of the report was not to look at this, but there's no analysis of school spending per student over time? And what might be, what might be driving that, right, trying to understand it?
I don't recommend it because it's based on the end-of-the-year report. And not everyone's categorizing and using the same charter accounts, and the information is not the same. It's not apples to apples. So, and also, you're going to have higher per pupil amounts because of the amount of students that you have low enrollment in your towns. So it's not fair to say you're spending more, I mean, you're spending more on students because you have to, because the state isn't funding based on a student enrollment-driven aid package.
I totally agree with that, and that's why I asked of going a bit more into the special needs kids and what are those trends? Because if we have more expensive kids in our school system, we have to teach them, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, and these are all submitted in writing if you want to have them.
Yep, I will share them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kathy. All right. Was there anyone from the regional school committee that had a comment?
I have some, like, some.
Either of you?
I have one.
Go ahead, Anna.
So one, one of the things that I noticed for the elementary schools and for the towns is that you, there's a, in the report, it's a percentage of economically disadvantaged students for pre-K to five? And I was wondering why you only went through grade five and not through grade six? It might just be the way the data is presented in DESI, so, but it's just a little awkward.
Are your elementary schools to grade six?
Yes.
Oh, then it's through grade six. That's my error. It shouldn't say through grade five. It should say through grade six. I apologize. I, 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 I'm going to elicit some sympathy here. I have three boys, I actually have three boys with profound autism, one of which is very, is going through a serious medical condition right now. And it's, so I was doing this during that, so I apologize. I truly apologize. I am proud of, I usually like to give you information that you can use that's credible and reliable, and this was just a struggle for me, and I am so sorry. Like, right now, I'm in my car doing this for you because of, I can't be in my house to do it. So it, it's, I apologize. If that gives me any grace, I would appreciate it. But yes, no, and economically disadvantaged, DESI has gone back and forth between low income and economically disadvantaged to low income again. So it's the same, it's just, you know, verbiage. It means exactly the same. They just prefer different language based on whoever the commissioner is. Okay. Thank you, Julie. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Julie. You can have all the grace you need.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I apologize.
Yeah, no, you're doing good. I'm hoping to hear more about structural deficit in relation to free crack, free, free cash. If you could sort of walk me through the mechanics of that, and if possible, you know, how that might, how we as a school committee might make the best possible use of that knowledge.
So I think as a school committee, to be aware first and foremost that you're not bringing in enough funding from chapter seventy to fund your schools and fund central office. And so your towns have to make up the difference. So being aware of that, and while you were asking them, you know, we, you know, we want our students to be competitive. We need to offer them these courses. We need to be able to, to change our curriculum and make sure they have great specials and band and all those other great things that they would leave to go to other schools for, or the districts for. You have to be remind, remember, you have to remember that they're in a situation where they had, if your entire district was regionalized, you would probably, as a school committee, one school committee, be looking at closing some of your schools, emerging them, which you don't want to do, obviously. You want to keep your schools open. And your towns are doing a great job keeping them open and also maintaining financial solvency, because they, I mean, that's not easy. And from, again, thirty thousand feet, I'm seeing healthy stabilization accounts and free cash, and, you know, they're doing a good job. So you, this is a great district. These are great towns. That's great, because you don't, you don't usually see that. You see towns struggling, and they don't have anything in their stabilization account, and they depleted it, and no free cash. And they have to use all of it every year. And it's, free cash is like your excess deficiency. It's one-time funding. It's not recurring. So you don't want to use it for recurring expenses, because if you use it this year, AMHRS is using fifty percent of it, and they say they're using a lot of it for school, their general budget, for school purposes. They have to make that up or figure out how they're going to make that, because right out of the gate for FY twenty-seven, they're in a deficit for funding that they don't have, that they used, and they're not going to replenish. So the same thing with E and D. If you use your E and D for your general budget to reduce assessments so your towns can pass your budget, where are you going to get that money for the following year? You just hope you're getting more in chapter seventy or more in minimum aid to make it up, or you have more students moving into your town. So you don't want to get into that position, and as you can see from AMHRS and from your very well-spoken FinCom member who spoke up, who spoke, who probably can answer the question best for AMHRS, is you, you're in this, this, you can't get out of it. It's like your Title I teachers. You're paying for your Title I teachers out of Title I money. And/or you get grant money for something special from the federal government, and you hire a teacher for it. At some point, if you move teachers into Title I, or if you move them into the, you're paying them under the grant, at some point, you don't want to lose a teacher. You got to move them into your general budget. It's the same thing with free cash and E and D. If you're using one-time funds, you got to figure out a way to get recurring funds to cover it. And now they're in this vicious cycle in AMHRS where they have to use their free cash a good portion of it every year to fund their general budget.
Julie, let me come in on this, please.
Sure.
Well, I think one of the, we talked about structural deficit. What Julie's saying is, free cash comes because you had excess income and you didn't spend all your budget. And the problem is that if you're counting on that every year, then you have to work around that and making sure you have, you have the free cash or the E and D. I think the person that spoke said a lot of times the, actually, the free cash is used to one-time expenditures, and that is what, is a good way to use it when you're putting on, I think, some sort of capital expenditure. It's what, it's a good use of that. It's a one-time expense. But if you're going to use that for continuing expenses, that puts a little pressure on how are you going to fund that for the following year? So that's what we talk about, a structural deficit that you created by using that. However, during the, when times get difficult, you have to use it in order to maintain your school district as well as be tentative to what the taxpayers feel they could pay. We're getting close to the time that we need to end. I don't know if there's any other particular questions we'd be glad to answer.
Yep, I have.
In the future, we could talk again.
Great, thank you. I have one more hand up, but I do want to specifically say thank you very much to both. Julie, this, there's an incredible amount of research that went into putting all of these together. So thank you so much for all of your work and, you know, a typo here and there. We've all had reports like that. We've all written them, so don't feel bad about that at all. And Steve, thank you also very much for all of your constant communication with us. So I see two more hands up, and then we will let our friends from Mars go and appreciate their time, and we can work together to collect questions and comments. And if there is a desire for more information, we can work to, work with Mars to have them put a proposal together, what it might cost to have them provide more, more research and information for us. So I see Deb's hand, and then Bridgette, and then we will say thank you and good night.
Hi, Julie. Thanks very much for this presentation. It was very informative. I have a question about free cash, in particular, three parts. Is there guidance around the maximum amount of free cash? Say you saved twenty percent of your budget in free cash. Is that considered reasonable? The second part is, do you distinguish the free cash that is expended for operating versus moved into the various stabilization accounts? And the third is, I don't know if it's related, but the number that you use from DLS for the percentage of education overall budget is different because from the spreadsheet, there's a difference in the number that's divided by, not the total amount spent on education, but the denominator is eighty-four thousand for this year, and that's about nine thousand, eight-four million. That's right. That's about nine million different from what the town reports that as, and I wondered if that was related to the free cash.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know where their free cash comes from, because I didn't look at their free cash sheets, but those are available on DLS. If you Google DOR, DLS, databank, you will see everything. And those, their free cash sheets are there. I don't think the shares would be there yet unless they filed it and it's posted. But the free cash, I'm sorry, can you just say the second question again? I'm trying to, I should have wrote it down when you said it.
You know, you said generally speaking, it's great to have free cash.
Always there a maximum. I don't think there's many towns, aside from Cambridge, and I like to use them as an outlier. They're a complete outlier. Don't ever compare anybody to Cambridge. They're just a unique town, and they, I'm sure they have their own challenges, that has that type of free cash. There isn't a maximum. They want them to maintain at least five percent. But, you know, the bond right, people who do their bond ratings would love to see the amount they maintain and that they, they, what they're using, and they're not using all of it every year, because they're, they're maintaining their budgets and they're creating budgets that they can afford. And they, I mean, this is good. This is, this is good for the town. Your towns have good bond ratings. That means you have a good bond rating when you go to borrow for your new school. And, I mean, those are good. You all work together as a team. Your regional district is your towns, right? So you want them to have a good bond rating. I don't, I don't see anything, there are reasons why their free cash is at that level, especially Shute, Sperry, and Leverett, when you're, you're close to your ceiling and you want to maintain these emergency funds that you have available, resources funds. That's what they call stabilization. There are finance. We recommend that you read them. You can contact your FinCom, you know, where are our finance, you know, whatever they put together. They have these policies of moving funds into stabilization. Yeah, you want that for your town. You want your towns to be stable so they can pay their school budgets. You also don't want them to be operating at their levy ceiling so they can continue to pay for their school budgets of the increases. So, you know, you have a vested interest in your towns being financially solvent. And your towns, you know, you have four towns that are, through every challenge in the world thrown at them are doing a really good job doing that, so.
Right. So my question really is, you know, when there's a certain amount of free cash left over at the end of the year, five percent gets left in free cash for the, for the upcoming year, ten percent gets put into general stabilization. Do you include that in your calculation overall when there's leftovers for free cash use? Being a good thing to have that amount left over?
I don't, because DESI, DLS does not have access to those financial policies. So they don't know what they're doing and what they're, you know, they don't. Some, some towns put their solar panel money into, you know, stabilization, a percentage of that. It's like twenty-five percent or whatever. I mean, every town's different. So they don't have access to that information, so I wouldn't have that unless I talked to the towns directly. That's the consulting, and you can get deep into the weeds of consulting, where they would go and speak to the towns and go talk to your assessors and give you information about those vacant parcels and tell you, and give you some outlooks and, like, of town and growth and things like that. I'm sure your towns have all done that and had that done, and they have town planners for that. This is just a very, very basic overview. I'm handing you a lot of data that's time-consuming. Mars, we did training on that in our help desk, so you can do it yourself. So what my hope is that you take this and every year you add to it yourself. Just fill in with databank. We have a PowerPoint with the links for all of these that I can find and send to your superintendent to share with you. So you can go access this information yourself and add to it every year, so that you don't need to pay someone to do it for you. It's just very time-consuming. There's no way your business manager has the time to do this, absolutely none. And I would venture to say your town administrator to give you this, this history probably does not have the time to do it either of the staff.
Julie, I'd like to come in on this. One of the things of the report that we've given you, you can use that to update. It's your report. It's in Microsoft Word, so you can make changes to it. You can add to it. And when you do that, the only thing I would ask is that you'd comment that you've made some changes in that report and when you did. So it's trying to help you take a look at the financing of the town in relation to the schools. As far as free cash goes, there's no limit of free cash that a community can have. However, in the regional school district, E and D, excess and deficiency, it's only, they're only going to have five percent, the half of that. And what happens is, which you said, the free cash at the end of the year, and even they're doing it, using it to free cash to fund, like, stabilization, fund into next year's budget, and you see then what will go forward. And good planning, sounds like you were doing some planning that they needed to do and keep, keep a balance in there, but yet, put it, put it into, like, stabilization, so that in the future, when you're going to do something big, you've got money there. You're not having to put a big tax burden on the taxpayers for one year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are we all, are we almost set, folks?
Yep, we have, we have one more question, and then, Bridgette.
Hi, thanks, Julie, very much. This was really informative. And I sent in five questions before this happened, and you've answered all but two of them, which is pretty impressive as well right there, so first appreciation. My question, first one's going to be a data one, and the second one, I hope, will be a little bit more fun. The first question is, like, the statewide average, I feel like it's not the best comparison, especially in the context of SOA, which is giving more money and using the aggregate wealth model to some communities versus others. And I was wondering if we want to compare our contributions to the other schools, especially the other rural schools that we compete with for students. Is there a public database we can get those through?
You would have to manually pull them out.
Okay.
There's, there's not, there's, DESI doesn't segregate through rural or urban. They should, but they don't. But it's, it's a great request to Sean Cronin to get that done, because they can very easily generate those reports. So next time I talk to him, I will ask him that.
Yeah, thanks so much. And the second thing is, I saw a town in Western Mass region recently that did an educational trust fund because they were seeing so much uncertainty in the budget, especially related to special ed costs. And we also have, you know, a lot of difficulty year over year due to the type of variation we see in those costs. And I was just wondering what types of innovative moves you had seen. Obviously, we've been doing a lot and working with our town really strongly to do a lot to pressure the state. But I'm wondering, what can we do as a locality innovatively to try and buffer against some of these difficulties we face?
There are, go ahead, Steve, because you have more, you have more knowledge of those educational trusts.
Julie, let me respond a little bit there. But part of, are you talking about, how can you, when you have, say, like, free cash, you put some money into a stabilization or a trust fund or something, so that when all these big costs come through, you have something to buffer it, to do that? And that's individual town can set those up and do that as you're going, and taking a look at your history. And I think one of the comments was a special education cost, watching the cost. What can happen is when you have students that are going to be placed out of district in a, they could be placed in a collaborative, which is, works well, but also if they're going to be going to a private school, they could be a hundred to two-hundred thousand dollars a year. So again, trying to buffer with those, you can create a stabilization account to do that. In actuality, you can create a special education revolving account that goes in and has very tight controls over it, which you have to do. So money can be put into that, and then when all of a sudden you get the. And then when all of a sudden you get the high cost, whatever, and it, it, and remember, as those students move through the district, you know, the, the, that money can be used to buffer those co, uh, costs so that you don't have to really hit taxpayers or cut your budgets in order to fund it.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you again, Stephen and Julie, for all of the work that went into this and for the towns, boards, committees, um, councils that, um, came to join us tonight. I think, uh, and Shannon, you have something else you'd like to mention? Are you still here?
No, um, I really appreciate you being here, um, Steve and, and Julie. And thank you for everybody else for attending.
Great. Thank you, thank you all.
Hey, everybody, good night. We're glad you, glad you've done the presentation.
Thank you so much, um, so.
Yeah, good night.
Nothing further on our agenda. I will move to, yep, go ahead, Kathy. Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
The Amherst Town Council is adjourned and the Amherst Finance Committee is adjourned. In the interest of time, I'm not going to call roll.
Excellent, thank you. Amherst School Committee, would you like to?
I move, will you adjourn? I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Jennifer, yes. Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amherst is adjourned, thank you.
Uh, I move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee.
Second.
William?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
And Margaret, yes.
All right. And I will move to adjourn the Regional School Committee.
Second.
Oh, yes, Tim, quick on the draw, I like it. Tim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Who's here? All right, um, Sarah Beth, yes. William?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Bridgette?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all very much for tonight and, and for all the work that went into making this happen today. We are adjourned.